How are you today?
I am well, thank you for asking.
Excellent, excellent. We'll start calling the Nae the lifesaver because he's always, uh, I don't know what you got, but she gets me out of binds where I can't find links to this out of your other. She's like right on top of it. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't even.
I try.
I don't even break a sweat anymore. I'm like, oh, I got plenty of time. We got fifteen minutes and I'll be all set. Thank you very much, Nae.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do we have any declines for this tonight's meeting of the members?
No, I believe that Jeff is on the phone because he's running a little bit late getting home, so.
I am, I am on the phone. Have I been accepted into the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so hey Jeff, okay.
We're all here, yeah.
Excellent, great. I guess at five o'clock, why don't we get started? Good evening, everyone. If, um, Nae, you can take the role, that would be fantastic.
Yes, Mary Kate Muren. Max Starks.
Present.
Samalid Hogan.
Present.
Maurice Lindsay.
Present.
Norm Hurdan.
Present.
And Jeff Sattler.
Present.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Nae. Like I said, good evening, everyone. So why don't we kick right off with our fiscal year twenty twenty one single audit in agreed upon procedures. I know we have a motion this evening, so John Tootsie.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, everyone. Um, so give you a real brief recap from the FY twenty one. We had the single audit and the agreed upon procedures. Um, O'Connor and Drew performed both of those audits and procedures. Um, those were again, the FY twenty one single audit. As a reminder, that's the audit of our federal funds. Um, the single audit usually includes our, an audit of our student financial aid cluster. Um, but this year, because we received over eleven and a half million dollars of HERF funds, um, they weren't required to test the financial aid cluster. And I'll get, and I'll get to that in just one second. Um, but when they did test for the single audit of the HERF funds, there were no findings, there were no issues. Um, they also tested the prior year finding that we had in FY twenty, which there was one instance of a student um, that didn't have their enrollment change recorded to the National Student Loan Clearinghouse, um, or the Student Loan Data System, NSLDS, um, within the sixty day timeframe. So when they revisited that this year, there were no further instances, there were no findings related to that. Circling back around to the student financial aid cluster, because it wasn't required to be audited, we still wanted to have them audit it. And so to do so, it was reviewed on a, using a agreed upon procedure, um, which basically it follows the same routine, the same practice as an audit. There were no findings for that as well. Um, and so to summarize, both the single audit and agreed upon procedures were clean with no findings. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And if not, um, there is the motion that's in front of you.
Thank you, John. Any questions of John? Okay, hearing none. Can I have someone read the motion, please?
I'll read the motion.
Thank you, Sam.
So, um, I move that the Springfield Technical Committee College Board Trustees Committee on Ways and Means pursuant to the provision of section twenty two, chapter fifteen A, moves to recommend to the board of trustees the approval of the FY twenty twenty one single audit and agreed upon procedures as presented.
Thank you, trustee Hogan. Need to have a second?
Second.
Excellent, thank you. Thank, thank you, Norman. Nae, you take the role, please.
Yes, Mary Kate Muren.
Yes.
Um, Max Starks.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan.
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Norm Hurdan.
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving right along, our fiscal year twenty twenty two financial update and outlook.
So for our cash flow projection, you'll see that we had approximately eight million dollars available at TD Bank, um, as of the end of February. And that does include us calling in approximately three and a half million dollars from our spring financial aid dispersment that we've been talking about. You will also see that we are projected to call down, um, our HERF lost revenue funds in mid-May, um, so that is still to come. So to summarize, we basically have four point three million dollars. We project to have a balance of four point three million dollars as of the end of June. Um, that is a million dollars higher than what we projected at last month's meeting. Um, the difference between last month and this month is that we are, as we're getting closer to the end of the year, we're dialing in, um, where we will land with our facilities projects. Um, so some of them will be carried forward until FY twenty three. Also, we're spending some of the funding, um, is coming from our state appropriation. So not all of it is coming out of our TD Bank cash, but rather the state appropriation. So between those two factors, it's increasing our available cash balance at TD Bank. And if we can move to the next slide. And here, um, basically this is just showing you a recap of spending by line item. Um, you'll see the actual column shows the spending to date. Um, actually, I should say through March fifth, um, where again, that's where you'll see we have the eight million dollar, uh, balance. Then you'll see what the projected spending is for the rest of the year through the end of June, where we wind up with the four point three million dollar projection. Um, and again, you'll have your totals on the final column there as to what the total cash inflows and outflows will be. Are there any questions on cash flow?
Nope. No questions. Nice walk through.
You can move to the next slide, please, and then one more. Um, so this is all the detail of our revenue and spending report through the end of February. Um, can we advance to the next slide, please? Um, similar slide to last month where we kind of recap the highlights of, of the activity that's happening. Um, so as of right now, we have a projected surplus of six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's made up of revenue being up four hundred and thirty one thousand and expenses lower two hundred and thirty nine thousand. Um, so a couple of the big differences that we've had between this month and last month is we have tuition and fees, which is slightly better than projected last month. Do it to slightly better enrollment for the spring semester. Um, that being said, we're still down eleven percent compared to the five percent down, um, compared to last year's credits regarding part-time salaries. Um, we currently have savings due to lower utilization of adjuncts and other part-time employees. However, that's offset by, um, anticipated adjunct increases, um, which were higher than originally budgeted. Um, as we continue to work with budget managers throughout this process and throughout the rest of the year, um, we'll have more opportunities to identify savings and continue to refine the projection as we move closer to year end. Um, any questions, um, or clarification anyone needs on these slides?
None for me. I like to call out boxes. Um, so well done.
Great, thanks, everybody.
Okay, yes, with that, we're going to the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget.
Great, good evening, everyone. Uh, really good to see you virtually. Uh, I am here on campus. And, uh, it is pretty quiet. It's spring break twenty twenty two, as trustees will have seen from me. Uh, we did want to mark time with the two-year anniversary of, of COVID and, and again, it's, it's a very different spring break for us this year. And I say that because there is a bit of optimism and outlook with this work. Um, and, and again, the spirit that we're sort of trying to move this forward with. Uh, just a couple of, of comments. And then again, I don't want to belabor it. Andrea Nathanson and her team have really put together a really helpful, uh, informative run through with assumptions and the first draft, uh, of the budget for your consideration. Looking forward to any Q and A at the end. Um, I will prompt to that article that we included. Again, we won't spend time on it necessarily, but hopefully that gives you a sense of that external, that outlook, uh, in, uh, perspective that will give us all some framing as we do strategic planning this year. And certainly as we look at a sort of multi-year approach, as we talk about, uh, sustainability, certainly from a fiscal perspective. So hopefully you found that article to be helpful. Uh, and it does ask some very, um, prompting questions. Uh, what kind of campus will we need in ten years? Who will our students be in ten years? Um, again, really, really important food for thought as we do that strategic planning work this year. One other note is that we do have enabling, uh, trustees to remain virtual, uh, in support of open meeting through July of this year. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to be sure to put that on your radar, that we certainly will be able to carry ways and means virtually all the way through June. Uh, should that have been a question, we had until April, and then again, uh, the legislature passed and the governor signed, uh, an update to that. So we will remain able to remain in this format all the way through the fiscal year. Um, one small note, too, uh, doesn't necessarily get noted all the time, but Carolyn DeLeefte, everyone, a small sidebar, I feel humored me one minute. Carolyn DeLeefte is retiring. She's been the longtime executive assistant to the CFO. Um, and again, just want to note her effort quietly. She takes the minutes for these meetings, everyone, and certainly does a ton of work, Carolyn. On behalf of the Division of Administration Finance, my sincere appreciation for all your work over the years, Carolyn DeLeefte, thank you. Um, and, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't give you a mention here with this really important committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
So with that, um, Andrea, our, uh, Andrea Nathanson, the CFO, I'll turn it over and, and have you kick us off.
Thank you, and, uh, good evening, everyone. So we've got a, today's the day that we start talking about the budget, um, in, in some detail. And so, uh, just to go through our process timeline here, so today we'll present the first draft of the budget. Our intent is to bring a balanced budget to the committee at the May meeting. So today is really considered a, a starting point. And from this point on, we'll devote, we'll identify opportunities to improve the budget between now and May, but, uh, this is our first look at the budget for next year. Um, we do expect this to be a collaborative process. So in the bottom left of the slide, you can see some examples of how we intend to engage the, uh, the campus community in budget discussions as we move forward through the next few months. If you can go to the next slide, please. So just a couple of slides to review some of the things we talked about last month. So this is really just a, a quick, high-level recap. So last month, we, we talked about some of our approach to some of the assumptions going forward. So some of the key factors, obviously, in the budget will be enrollment, which drives tuition and fee revenue. Uh, we also, uh, talked about expenses really needing to flex with enrollment to the extent possible as we go forward. And just that, uh, I note that full-time salaries, again, are the largest expense at fifty percent of the total budget. And, and a really important point, while the structural deficit is not sustainable, the financial position of the college is solid. And so just something to keep in mind as, as we, uh, go through this process. And also, you know, STIC is not an over-resourced institution. I don't think anyone would say we have a lot of extra funding here. But we're also still really establishing systems to identify and monitor cost savings. So again, uh, over the next couple of months, we'll really be digging into a lot of the details, uh, to the extent that we can do that. And really, the overarching message here is that the college is building a multi-year response to arrive at sustainability. And this budget for next year is really, is, is a part of that process. We go to the next slide, please. So this is, um, just a specific response to a request from the February meeting. Uh, we were asked to, um, we asked for a historical expense trend. And so what this slide is showing is, uh, on the graph, in the blue, we see the, the revenue trend back to FY seventeen. And the expense, so the blue is revenue, the green is expense, and we can see how those have tracked together. Overall, you can see that expense has increased modestly while revenue has declined. And if we ignore the two years of FY twenty one and twenty two, that include the HERF funding and the impacts of COVID on expenses, et cetera, just, it was interesting to note the, the change, let's say, from FY twenty to the FY twenty three draft budget that we'll be looking at. Expenses increased during that time period by two point six million, and some of the major factors are the establishment of the IT capital budget, which was new in FY twenty two, at one point seven million, um, and full-time salary expense increasing over those two years by two point two million, mostly related to, uh, pay rate increases. And at the same time, that's been offset, uh, there's a small increase in operations and utilities, but the part-time salary expense has actually decreased over that time period by almost nine hundred thousand dollars, mainly due to, uh, a drop in utilization of, uh, part-time employees and adjuncts. So I'll see if there's, I, I get, and I just want to add also, at the end of the packet, there's a more detailed format where you can see the details that go into these line items, but I didn't want to get into that with level of detail here. But anyone who's interested can look at the, uh, the multi-year trend in more detail, uh, in the packet.
Thank you, Andrea. Yeah, thank, thank, thanks for walking through this. Just this one question. So, so given we, we've had revenue pressures, you know, that, that's kind of our thing, right? When we go through our budgeting process, we always start with our revenues and there's always, you know, questions about our, our ability to even maintain, you know, level of revenue. What, what do we have for, for expense saves, um, based on things, actions we've taken? So we, so obviously, you, you described increased spend, which is, which is real. But, but what, what actions have we taken to kind of keep expenses in, in line as much as we can? You might, you might have the answer, you might not have the answer here. I'm sorry, you might not have the answer here, but just going forward, it'd be nice to add that, because I know we've done some things, right? To try to, try to keep ourselves, you know, within, within a relative range, realizing we have to, we have to, got to increase our spend for the item that you've listed here. But we, we've also done, done some things to kind of keep spend in check. So after you don't have it with you here, but something you could add going forward would be helpful.
Absolutely. And I think when we get into the budget conversation, you'll see some of the approaches we're, we're taking to, um, to look at expenses as well. So I think that the conversations are connected, but we can definitely add that in the future.
Yeah, yeah, because historically, we've done some things. We've had, you know, trustees have mentioned some things for the college to kind of follow, right? So historically, like in twenty, in twenty nineteen, what did we do? Twenty twenty, what did we do? What, what are some of the things we're doing, right? So we want to be able to show, yes, we're, we're actually seeing that price increases and cost increases are all well and good. People, people understand that. But they also want folks to understand that we're diligently looking at our expense base, right? So this was some of the actions that we've taken over the years would be helpful.
Absolutely, we can do that. So if we go to the next slide, please. Uh, so now we'll get in, we'll start talking about the, the actual draft budget. Uh, so, these are just the assumptions that we'll be discussing. We reviewed these conceptually last month. We talked about how we will approach, uh, determining how we, determining our assumptions in these different categories. And today we'll talk about the specifics that we've actually included in the budget. So if we can go to the next slide, please, and we'll go, we'll have a slide on each of these, so we'll, we'll go through one by one. So the state appropriation. So again, the state appropriation is, is a large portion of our revenue. Uh, in this budget, we've set the appropriation at twenty eight point seven six million dollars. This number comes from an estimate provided by the Department of Higher Ed. And, um, it's actually about eight hundred thousand dollars more than what we had in the FY twenty two budget. Um, just a reminder that this is a number that's subject to legislative process, so we have no control over this number in the end. Uh, the final number, you know, and we don't really have any control over the timing as well. So we could get more information to inform this number over the next few months before we close the budget, or we'll, we'll really, we really won't find out what the final number is until next year. So we'll just get, we take the information we have as we get it and incorporate that into, uh, into the budget. So this, this is what we know at this point in time. And we, so we do consider this to be a conservative estimate. I don't anticipate that this number will get lower, but it could increase, but we won't know for some time. Any questions about the appropriation?
So I, I see now why, why it's not called estimate, because basically what you're saying is, we're, we're not, we're not going to know, we're not going to know of any decrease. Um, versus the twenty eight point seven six. So this is the best, this is, this is the number we're going to stick with even when we get to fi- the finalized budget in May.
Yes, unless DHD gives us an updated number. So, you know, as time goes on, the, we won't know the final number really until the budget is approved by the legislature. But we might get some hints about additional funding at some point in the next couple of months. But we, we, we can discuss that when, as we get that information and decide whether it is reliable enough to put into the budget.
Yeah, understood. So basically, you're saying that twenty eight point seven six will be in the next draft, next month, in April's draft, and also in May's draft.
Most likely, unless we get some additional information from the state.
Which you said will only go up.
That's my, yes, that's the expectation. I don't, I, this, this, I, I.
I still want to say, that's what you said. You said, like, oh, it won't go down. That makes sure I heard.
You can trust that I will not put it here if I don't, if I'm, don't feel confident in it. Well, let's put it that way. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to give you, uh, somewhat conservative number. And so I, I feel pretty confident that this is a floor for us for next year. And I'm optimistic that it could be higher, but we just can't count on it yet.
We should probably just call that estimate on that bar chart. It says, this is budget, you know, but it's really, it's really an estimate.
Okay, good point. Uh, any other questions on the appropriation? So if we can move to the next slide, please. Uh, so at the last meeting, we discussed the declining enrollment, uh, the enrollment trend since, uh, twenty thirteen. And so here we have in the dark blue bar, the, uh, what we have in the budget right now, which is a, um, we have in the budget, uh, a little over seventy two thousand credits, which represents a three percent decline from what we project for FY twenty two. So this is a continued decline, but at a slower rate than the recent past. Uh, in order to validate these numbers, we, uh, we looked at the analysis done by institutional research, where they looked at four different scenarios, ranging from a conservative approach to an optimistic approach. And the average of their scenarios actually comes out to very close to the seventy two thousand credits. So we feel, you know, this is, we're setting a goal for next year around, um, around enrollment, not dropping as much as it had in previous years. But we, it, we're encouraged by the fact that the detailed analysis comes out on average, close to what we have in this version of the budget. And in the next round, so when we come back next month, I can bring you a range of what would it look like if we had, you know, up by three percent, down by ten percent, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at different ranges and see what our risk is here. And it's possible we would come back with something other than three percent next month, but that's what we're going with in this draft. Any questions about enrollment?
I, I like the connection to the, the scenarios that you, you, you kind of outlined there. Is there a way to, to, to validate that with, with the actual twenty twenty two versus what the same data would have said back then, to see if, if using that data is valid?
Oh, I see what you mean. Uh, yes, we can take a look at that.
Great.
I think one of the, one of the tricky things is just the impact of COVID. And so we don't know to what extent, you know, the, the pandemic effect, you know, has disrupted what otherwise would have been a natural trend, you know, based on their graphics or something like that. So, but we can definitely dig in, dig in more and analyze this. You know, the other thing is that, um, you know, in particular, in internal, external, there are more discussions about, uh, strategies around retention. And, and so, um, you know, retention and recruitment. So, you know, I think that, I don't know if someone else wants to jump in on that, or if you wanted to move past it. But, um, this includes both this, um, you know, the intention to make additional efforts around enrollment as well.
No, that's a great point. What I would offer to the, to the committee is, again, for new, new members, um, this very approach where we project and forecast the map is relatively recent. You know, as recently as two thousand and sixteen, the college wasn't putting these types of forecasts together. So I think, uh, to Mac and others, right, we've certainly come a long way and it's been necessary. So we certainly, um, can map back and look at how would this have done with our enrollment this year? How predictive essentially would it have been? Uh, again, as, as Andrea pointed out, um, you know, there of course is, is a certain amount of best estimate approach to this with some uncertainty. One of the things that we're internally talking about, and again, as rightly prompted, we, we do a lot of these programmatic conversations with internal, external, even as they are, um, on point with budget conversations. What is the mix? How much, uh, of our classes and our credits have been online versus on campus? And by type of class? And we are looking ahead and really thinking about how will that influence enrollment next year? Again, when students have choice, morning, afternoon, evening, online, all things being equal, we still don't quite know what they will opt for. You know, what's the vaccine requirement? What's the mask requirement? Those are the type of things that will be potentially different or evolved this year versus last year. So again, more, more to come for sure.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on enrollment? If not, we can move on to the next slide, please. So another important, uh, variable in the budget are, uh, assumptions around fees. So in this draft of the budget, we are assuming no fee increases. As a reminder, if you look at recent history up until last year, the, uh, pre-COVID fee increases averaged about ten dollars per credit from twenty sixteen to twenty twenty one. And then in FY twenty two, we had no fee increase because of the pandemic. Uh, at this point, we're not advocating for fee increase, but we should at least discuss the potential of like, what would the potential impact be if we increase fees? And here we have a few examples. So, you know, if we were to ask the question, should we increase fees? Well, it's seventy two thousand credits. Every one dollar increase in per-credit fees would add seventy two thousand dollars in revenue. Uh, we asked the question, what if we only increased fees for out-of-state students? And we look, we said, well, even, even a five dollar increase per credit adds only twelve thousand dollars in revenue because of the low volume of, of out-of-state students. And then we said, well, what about health students in competitive programs? Uh, what if we increase their per semester fees? And in order to get even fifty thousand dollars of additional revenue, we would need to increase those fees by fifty six dollars per student per semester. And so what this is really telling me is that, you know, we, we could, the, the benefit of the fee increases wouldn't really offset the cost in potential lost enrollment at this point, because we're still sort of, um, because of the, the pandemic impact, and we haven't quite gotten past the financial impact of the pandemic, pandemic for students. Uh, we're really not advocating increasing fees at this time, but, but we certainly can look at it in more detail. And just a note to add, I was at the statewide community college CFO meeting this past Friday, and they did an informal survey of the group. And it looks like most of the community colleges are not planning fee increases for next year. There are a few that are, but most of them are not. So just to share that. Any questions about fee increases?
Is there a way to look back historically and, and, and show when we have increased fees, what enrollment did? To see if there's some sort of, uh, 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 connection? So if we increase, uh, throw a number out there, if we increase fees five percent, you know, in, in the past, and we were assuming that we were going to do it this year, could we look back and say, you know what, we, we increased fee, fee, fee five percent, we lost X percent of, uh, versus what we expected for enrollment? The, this, that, the type of thing would be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, Mac, it reminds me, um, of our conversation about tuition elasticity, I think was the term, right, that we've looked at. So we'll definitely,
Right.
sharpen the pencil back up and look back at that. You know, tough, tough stuff, trustees, right, to draw, draw causal comparisons to some of that. But we definitely have modeled in the past, everyone, if we raise fees, how many students, all things being equal, will we lose because of that? And obviously, that's part of our strategy that we offered to you even in this first draft is with that elasticity, the potential to lose students because of any kind of fee increase. Obviously, we're trying to really hold on to enrollment. Those last two bullets, I think, are really well-made by our finance team, the idea of looking under the stones, though. Well, what about out-of-state students? Lots of other public colleges look to that group. Well, it doesn't really add a, a ton. Um, well, what about our health programs? Well, again, doesn't really add a significant revenue source. And now we might be taking issue with one of our significant value propositions. So again, uh, tuition elasticity, definitely. Thanks for the prompt, Mac. And again, if that helps with some of the other prompting context, everyone.
Do you speak with the other community colleges? Are they anticipating increasing their fees in twenty three?
So what I've heard from the, the CFO group is that most of them are not planning to increase fees. There are a few are, but most of them are not. And there's a survey going around of that group, and I'll have better, you know, a little more solid information on that next month. But it sounds like most people are not doing, most of the colleges are not increasing fees.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, fees? If not, we can move on to the next slide, please. So again, a key component of the budget is, uh, our staffing levels and assumptions around staffing levels and salary expense. So on this graph, the blue bars show the number of full-time employees, uh, in each year. So in the years twenty seventeen to twenty twenty two, those are actual, that's the actual headcount, uh, at a point in time in October of each year. The twenty three budget number is, uh, includes positions that could have been vacant in the past, but it's, it's the full load of, uh, full-time positions in the budget. So our baseline at the start of this process was three hundred and seventy four full-time positions, assuming no vacancies. At this point, in this version of the budget, we have three hundred and fifty nine full-time employees. Um, and the difference of that fifteen is, is based on known vacancies and retirements that we would not be refilling. So positions that are vacant. So the, this is, um, basically a reduction to attrition. Uh, when we look at the, the salary, the dollar amount, the, the orange line on the graph represents the total salary expense. And you can see in the budget, that's, uh, twenty six and a half million dollars. And you can see in the budget, that's, uh, twenty-six and a half million dollars. And, uh, what we're including in this budget is pay rates, uh, being inflated by two percent for all employees, all not, all full-time employees, so union and non-union. And between FY twenty-two projected and FY twenty-three budget, that increase would account for about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars of increased salary expense. Uh, we also, not in the budget, but something we wanted to point out, because we, we generally don't talk about it here, but we'll, we'll work to incorporate these numbers going forward. Is that we actually have, uh, eighteen grant-funded positions and counting, they're increasing, uh, based on new grants. Uh, they're not included in this draft budget, but we, we have salary expensive, uh, a little over one million dollars for these other eighteen positions at this point for grants. And so that, we generally don't include them in this sort of cash-based, um, budget because it's dollars in, dollars out. But just so you know, there, we're, um, supporting more employment here than what we usually show with these grant-funded positions. Any questions about, uh, the information here?
I have just one question. When do we renegotiate with the unions? Because obviously with inflation, two percent is not going to cut it, uh, going forward. I mean, we're at seven and a half last year and we're higher than that. So I would ex, ex, you know, think that employees' expectations, uh, driving from inflation in our negotiation effort, are they, are there any union negotiations this year or in twenty-three's budget?
So. Did you want to take that or do you want me to?
Well, only, only just that. First, let me help trustees. The negotiation, everyone, of our two collective bargaining agreements are done statewide, right? So we, we, I, I wouldn't say we're at the mercy of it, but it is the fifteen community colleges collectively that do that. And we are currently engaged with one of those, um, collective bargaining units in contract negotiation. So I'm mindful of how I frame all that. So it definitely is, is ongoing. Um, we also have, um, you know, a group called non-unit professionals, and in some ways, um, are those exempt employees that we want to still stay market competitive with. So even though those aren't negotiated, we're obviously, especially in this type of labor market, working to retain our talent to the extent possible. So we know these costs are definitely going up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on staffing levels and salary expense? So if not, we can move on to the next slide, please. So infrastructure and investment, we saw a similar slide last month. Uh, this is slightly different. So in the budget, right now, we have the usual three point one million dollars for facilities capital, and we have one point three five million dollars for IT capital. Uh, just a reminder that the IT capital budget was first formalized in FY twenty-two. So for this year, at one point seven million, uh, we, the ask for next year is one point three five million. But I'll make the point that that does depend on us being able to carry forward the unused balance of the one point seven million from this year into next year. So similar to the way we carry forward unused facilities capital going forward, due to things like supply chain issues, which we're definitely having in IT, and the fact that projects don't miraculously end in June and then start, you know, start new ones in July. You know, we, we have projects that, you know, extend beyond, um, the, the arbitrary sort of end of the fiscal year. So, uh, the one point three five million should be sufficient as long as we can carry forward the balance from the one point seven million. And just so, when you, when you add those up, uh, we have in the budget right now four point four or five million dollars in combined stick, uh, stick facilities and IT capital, which, you know, is, is a pretty high number. It looks like, you know, there could be an opportunity for savings there, but you'll have continued, continued discussions about the, the risk for falling behind in needed repairs and upgrades if we do cut back on those numbers. So, but it is something that we'll look at over the next couple of months. Any questions or comments about, uh, facilities and IT?
I just have a question.
Sure.
The, that's aggressive, in my opinion, three point one million to continue to fund capital, which is great. But if we were to reduce that, what would that be based on? Lack of student enrollment? Or, um, you know, how much room do you have from that standpoint if we had to reduce that budget? And by how much? Has there been any discussion there?
That discussion will happen more over the next couple of months. So I've asked Deb Avery to come up with, um, you know, multiple scenarios. I mean, essentially, we know we have over three hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance on the facility side. And so the three point one million dollars, really, it would take us many, many, many years to even catch up with that. And so i- in some ways, it's not sufficient now. But also, you know, we would have to prioritize, you know, where, where do we need to work? And what do we need to keep up with? And how do we, you know, leverage our D CAM capital to, to make sure that we take care of all the critical repairs? So, you, you know, it's something we can have continued discussions on. And trustee Sattler, you know, we've appreciated your, uh, input into those discussions. And we'd be happy to include you and, and see if, uh, you'd like to talk through that with us.
All right. I don't want to, um, Jeff, that's a great point. I don't want to steal the bottom line figure that we're going to show you here. But, um, you're going to see, this is absolutely, if you will, on the table for us to ensure a balanced budget. Um, by the time you see draft three. Um, some of it is, we know it definitely takes some time to put a project in motion and get it spent down. Um, that's always been a challenge. Uh, but again, if we need to borrow a little against that traditional number, um, again, our team has, has been real open-eyed about that. So you'll, you'll see that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about, uh, capital? If not, we can move to the next slide, please. So, we, in this version of the budget, we are asking trustees for use of reserves to balance the budget. And just a reminder, back in FY twenty-one, so last year, we leveraged her funding in order to, uh, give us the opportunity to extend a pathway to recalibrate the budget over multiple years. You know, and that really allows us time for, you know, if there's some potential to recapture some lost enrollment, uh, it buys time for that. And it also buys time for us to better align resources with enrollment, uh, and, and make any changes gradual and, and less painful, you know, as we cut expenses. And so in this version of the budget, we are, uh, we have included four million dollars from reserves in our, in our revenue, um, in this budget. So, um, in anticipation of a discussion about, well, what do we have in reserves? And, you know, what, what's available in reserves to use for this purpose? If you can go to the next slide, please. I figured by now, um, here's a slide that was, uh, prepared by John Tudren, and you probably would like to hear a different voice at this point. So I'm going to ask John Tudren to go through this slide with you.
Sure, be glad to jump in. Um, so what you see on the chart is the blue line represents our unrestricted net position. And so if you jump right to FY twenty-one, you'll see we have the twenty-three point eight million dollars that's on our financial statements as of the end of last year. We have the five-year history. We also have a five-year projection. So exactly as Andrea mentioned, if we start to use, um, say, four million dollars for that FY twenty-three budget, um, you'll see that in the box on the top right-hand column, the different uses of reserves. Um, you'll see how the unrestricted net position declines, you know, as we project out to FY twenty-six. So the uses include anything from our facilities carryover funds, um, to a declining use of reserves, um, by one million each year. So we start off at four million, and FY twenty-three goes down to one million, and FY twenty-six. You'll also see that we're including the six million dollars for the building twenty relocation. And we wanted to split that up into two fiscal years for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five. The other assumption that we made is taking into account some earnings from our investments. Um, if we talk to fiduciants, our investment advisors, they would project a seven percent annualized return. Um, to be conservative, we're just looking at approximately a three and a half percent annualized return going out those five years. The other thing that I'll just point out is the, the orange line shows what our cash and investments balance is. Again, um, in FY twenty-one, that's what you'll see on the financial statements. Um, FY twenty-two, we did a point in time update. And you'll see how that basically follows the same pattern as our unrestricted reserves does. Um, so you'll see, to, to summarize, you'll see in FY twenty-six, we wind up with six and a half million dollars of unrestricted re, uh, of unrestricted reserves, which is essentially the same level that we had back in FY nineteen. Um, and that's when we used the three million dollars for building nineteen. So, you know, this is kind of showing that if we follow this model, you know, we, we still are, we still have a sufficient cash balance and balance in our unrestricted net position.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments on this? So it's, for me, the, what this is telling me is that we do have sufficient reserves here in order to, um, use the four million dollars for FY twenty-three. So if there aren't any other questions, if we can move on to
Let me, before we go, Andrea, I, I can't help. I, I have to. For the committee, we're really proud of this slide because there's so many questions around not just this, this year, but the years ahead. There's a lot of work and strategy that went into really building a multi-year approach. And I feel like this best captures the visual. The fact that we can level ourselves out by fiscal year twenty-six to a position we had pre-pandemic, to show you not just what we need your help with, with reserves this year, but the next five years. That to me is a significant amount of strategy and consideration for you to take under advisement. This really helps give us some parameters to work within, not just this year, but the years ahead. So again, for, for what that's worth, I just wanted to just live in this, this a little bit because this is a significant amount of planning for us, I think. And it's going to be helpful for us to be sure that you have the assurances about how this gets us to a place come fiscal year twenty-six.
So if there are no other questions or comments, if we could move ahead.
We do, we do have a question.
Oh, do we? Okay, sorry.
Yes, um, I'm just looking back on the numbers on the right. So this represents, um, using four million of the reserves in twenty twenty-three, three million of the reserves in twenty twenty-four, or is that six million? Because I see B two twenty relocation.
Right, so it's, it would be a total of six million. And again, the, the, for the building twenty relocation, the years are estimates. But, so the idea is, is the support for operations would be over four years, four, three, two, one million over four years. And then separately is the six million dollars that was already approved by trustees for building twenty.
We did that, yeah, yeah, okay.
In a couple of those years, it would be a bigger draw.
So what we're talking about here is, so building twenty aside, um, operation support, four million in twenty twenty-three, three in twenty twenty-four, two in twenty twenty-five, and one in twenty twenty-six, for a total of ten your, your views reserved, uh, for the operational support only part. Because I see other things in there. Okay. And that's what I was looking at. I was trying to match up the lines. Okay.
And just to clarify, this is, this is an example of a scenario. When it comes time to approve the budget, we'll only be asking for the four million for twenty.
Got it, yeah.
So, so we won't be asking for a commitment for those future years in this budget process, but we would just wanted to illustrate what it could look like going forward.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, was there another question? Okay. Uh, so if not, uh, we can move, move forward a couple of slides. So this is the detailed version of the budget, uh, which we won't look at here because I'm sure no one can read it, but you can look at it in your, um, in your packet. If we can go, please, to the next slide. This is really the summary version. So, um, I won't discuss every line here, but just point out a few highlights. So if we go to the bottom line, we can see that, um, the draft budget at this point is showing a deficit of about one point two million dollars. And again, by the time we get to May, we'll have a break-even budget like we did in FY twenty-two. But we thought here, we begin to compare this draft budget with FY twenty-two. So a couple of things, uh, before we go to the boxes, um, in purple, we can see that this version of the budget does include the four million dollars from reserves in revenue. The other notable change here is that, is on these lines that are in red, uh, the HIRF line. So remember, in FY twenty-two, we have seven million dollars of HIRF revenue and about two million dollars of HIRF expense. So we had this net positive of five million dollars in the FY twenty-two budget that we need to make up somewhat going forward. And some of that would be made up by the, uh, the use of reserves. Uh, a few other notable changes here. In, in revenue, while the appropriation looks like it would be going up budget to budget about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, the enrollment to, related tuition and fees are dropping based on that three percent decline in enrollment. So, uh, there's that offsetting, uh, negative of eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. On the expense side, even though we eliminated some of those vacant positions at a value of about eight hundred thousand dollars, uh, the total expense is increasing by almost six hundred thousand, really related to pay increases. Um, and this comparison is different from the other slides. So the budget to budget increase is about a million dollars because of some retroactive, um, union negotiated pay increases that were put into effect. So full-time salaries would be increasing by about, uh, five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, part-time salaries are interesting as well because, uh, while we have with lower enrollment, lower utilization of part-time and adjuncts, which reduces the, uh, the expense. We have an increase in expense from an anticipated, pay increase in the new adjunct, uh, contract, which is not quite ratified yet, but we do believe that, we did want to be conservative and put those pay increases in there. So the net is, uh, the net decrease in expense is not as much as we would have expected. Um, under operating, just a couple of things to point out, uh, an increase in IT operating expenses mainly related to cybersecurity needs. And, uh, just pointing out that, that we have in here a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars next year for holding the tech park space for the building twenty ship's relocation. Um, you know, if, if that doesn't go through, that expense would go away, but we'll, we'll need to hold that space, uh, if we do get funding for that project. And, uh, those are really the, the highlights. So, um, I don't know if anyone has additional questions or comments about this. Uh, just, we'll be digging into the details as we move forward. Um, any questions?
Yeah, question, Andrea. So, so I don't know, the, the ask for this, this budget turn is four million dollars of reserves. But this would imply either we need five point two million of reserves or there's going to be some cost takeouts or revenue increases to make up that gap. So it can help, help us understand which, which, where we should interpret this?
We will, again, this is draft one. So by the time we get to May, this will be a balanced budget. Uh, we don't expect to ask for more than four million dollars. We will find, most likely, it will be expense reductions that we come back with. And, and we'll definitely come back with an improved budget in April. And if we can identify other revenue sources, we will, but mostly it'll be a focus on expenses, which actually is on the next slide.
So you're saying that no matter what, at this point, you're not asking for more reserves than four million dollars, you're going to, you're, we're going to find it elsewhere.
Exactly.
Is that realistic? Is, is that, is that getting to the facilities, a dollar amount that we were talking about earlier? That trustee Sattler was hitting on?
It, it could.
That's a lot, that's a lot of money, right? I mean, you look at, look at kind of our cost structure here. Not like we can snap our fingers and drop that much, that much. So, so I know we just had a conversation about asking for, I know it's preliminary, but asking for four million in reserve. But it sounds like that could increase to get to a balanced budget.
I, I don't anticipate that. So, so what we're presenting today is more conservative than what we'll present going forward. So we'll, we'll definitely, uh, just the way the process works, we get all the inputs. We, you know, Jason puts it all together, and this is what we can present to you. The, in the next couple of months is when we do the digging in and we find opportunities. And so we know places that we can walk. And, you know, I would worry more if we get to April and we haven't improved this bottom line. But I, but I'm confident that we will.
Let me give a couple of examples too. And I know, Mac, this feels a little bit like our word is our bond and that that's not a thing to budget on. But again, if passed, passed as prologue, we committed to keeping on building twenty, the ceiling at six million. We kept the ceiling on six million as part of that package that we move forward. Same thing with this. The ceiling is four million. Uh, again, not that we like it, this is the, the, the least of the bad choices type of a consideration. But even if we cut this in half, we're down to six hundred thousand. You know, we could then lower the facilities line to two point five million from the three point one. Again, not that we, any of us like it, it would certainly slow down some of the work that we're doing, but that may be a place we go to. The other wild card out there is we won't know on retirements until we know on retirements. Uh, individuals can give us a day's notification, and some of those who give a year's notice can get Individuals can give us a day's notification and some of those who give a year's notice and get an incentive as a state employee don't actually have to see that through. So we're hoping to know more about who will actually retire come May in particular, to better help with that full-time salary line. So those are some of the things that are in flux for us.
Understood. Yeah, but without seeing the potential levers we have on the slide, it, it leaves me with either asking for 5.2 million. At the end of the day, it's, that's it. Understood.
And I just have a couple of quick questions on the tuition and fees. Sure. Is that's based on credit hours, not students themselves? How many credit hours does that relate to?
Remember, we're heavily part-time. Sorry, Andrea. Just, this thing is permanently imprinted in my brain, Jeff. So, you know, we're pushing 60% of our students are part-time, which is why headcount and some, I'm not saying it's irrelevant, but the average student takes about 10 credits, 10.1 credits. And so that's really, it's built on that type of a model.
And I just want to understand better the, the operating cost of 404,000 on the IT relative to facilities and capital, relative to what we're budgeting for, the 1.7 in total or from the carryover? How, is, is there any room within those two numbers as well when it comes to IT going into next year?
On the IT capital?
Yeah.
It, it could be, but it has to do with some of the carryover piece. So again, it's something we're going to look at. So. We'll look to see if we can get what we need and, and at the same time, put less money in the budget for next year. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah. So there was some mention about part-time. The reason we're part-time is that because of COVID, is that what's happening here? Or is it just a trend that's happening?
Normal students, the, the trend of part-time?
Yeah, the part-time. So it's, yeah.
Yeah, we, I mean, community colleges have been trending that way honestly for like two decades now. And, and most Massachusetts community colleges are, are pushing close to 60% of students part-time, right? We just know our students' average age of 26, their parents, they're working. They piece us together with the rest of the elements of their life. So that is not new news for us. It's a beast to try to budget on because of that part-time nature of it. But no, that's been a trend very much been in place for us for a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this slide? If not, could we move to the next slide, please? This one's just a graphical illustration of the components of revenue and expense. And while last year, you can see on the left there, we, we filled the gap, the deficit with the 5.1 million dollars in recovery relief funds. In this budget, we're looking at the $4 million coming out of reserves, which doesn't quite fill the gap in today's version of the budget, but it will when we, when we get to the end of the process. So if we can go to the next slide, please. So we looked at something, a slide like this last meeting. So the, the pie chart is showing the different components of expenses, total budget expenses here is $53.4 million. The, the sections of the chart shaded in blue represent the salaries with full-time salaries at 26.5 million or 50% of the total. You know, we know that the solution in terms of balance in the budget requires alignment of expenses with revenue and understanding that the blue sections here, you know, are a majority of the budget. Obviously, we'll need to be looking at those categories of expense. And, you know, while we will look at all, all types of expenses and see where we can find savings, you know, we definitely will be looking to see how we can match resource. Need, you know, look at resource needs that fluctuate with enrollment going forward. But this is really, this is, this slide is really where the work is over the next couple of months is digging into the details around these expenses and seeing, not about slashing, but about being more efficient and, you know, finding opportunities to serve our students and meet the needs of the mission, but also find some savings. Any comments or questions on this slide? Then if we could advance the slide, that would be great. Thank you.
I'll just be brief. We, we could have added probably a doubling to your deck with points made on this, but we, we wanted to be humane about it. But really be sure that this committee in particular understands there are comprehensive efforts in place to move us towards sustainability. Underneath all this is program by program conversations, faculty with administrators around student retention and trying to find the bottom and build back with enrollment growth. We spend a lot of time talking about those initiatives and efforts in internal, external. We certainly can talk about that more with this group and, and the full board. But there's a, there's an incredible amount invested in student retention right now. Again, we'll see how well we can hold our students from this semester over the summer to fall of this coming year. That's a significant inflection point for us. Even strategic planning, the idea that this year gives us a chance to really focus and build priorities. We have technical in our midterm name. I think sometimes we've not necessarily laid down a strategic plan. What does that translate as? What are our priorities, particularly in the areas of healthcare and STEM? And how do we resource and in some ways protect in a budget, some of those resourcing needs because of our priorities? We've got work this year to be clear about that, to build the college of the future. And obviously and clearly because of our infrastructure standpoint, we have a lot invested in this decision from D CAM and the Commonwealth that we hope to hear about May, June, around building 20 in that relocation. There's 70 million of deferred maintenance needs packed into building 20. If we can get out from underneath that, that has a huge impact and a cascade on some of the other sustainability conversations for us as a college. So again, I wanted to just call out those three, those three areas. In this last slide, again, it's really more open-ended. If you, if you, if you grant me, just wanted to say thank you to this committee. Your investment, your consideration of reserves is obviously imperative to the work this year and the years ahead. Thank you to our finance team. Again, really working hard to prep all this. We hope that you found the visuals and the thoughtfulness, comprehensive and useful. Clearly, we do need a multi-year strategy to work towards sustainability. We hear that we're taking notes, the idea of some examples about where we have been diligent with expenses. Where we have, by the way, been diligent in asking trustees for help. We had a core switch that went out back in 2019. That was $420,000 that wasn't in the budget. We can certainly point to and call those types of things forward. And again, this idea of enrollment. And a lot of it is, is really, there is so much value on the retention piece of that I offered to this committee as opposed to sometimes our natural inclination is to always focus on the recruitment side of things. Keeping the students we do have here is a larger part of that value proposition. So without that, again, we stand here, we're happy to take feedback, hear your questions, hear your advice and counsel.
I just have a comment. Thank you, Dr. Cook. I think the having that five-year plan is huge. I don't, we'd never seen that before. And I know it takes a lot of work, but I think it's, it's really needed and I think a lot of work has gone into it. I would, I would only comment that obviously we want to get through 23 and not take more than the 4 million. My question is if we start seeing, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel, we start going the other way and having excess funds, are those excess funds going to be paying for more overhead expectations? Or would you take that cash and put it back into that liquid reserve account? And only, only use 2 million in 2024 versus the 4 million? You know what I mean?
I mean, the short answer is hand in glove. Because you approved the budget, we'll operate within that. And again, if we see larger surpluses, and we'll call them that, even though they're not exactly that, right? The, the inclination right now is to push that into reserves and build back up even more of the rainy day fund, right? We are a college that has emergencies. We are still in some ways on a pandemic footing. So we don't want to be too bold too soon with perhaps how we invest or spend. With that said, things like equipment needed for our programs to stay industry current are certainly not getting any less expensive. And so how we strategically invest that money, that's going to be a conversations, most certainly with trustees, but also certainly within our college and with our faculty and with our programs. So again, that would be a wonderful problem, a good problem, I think, Jeff, to have.
Yep, thanks. Yeah, I understand it.
Any other questions, comments?
No, I think Andrea, right, Mac brought up some of the other things just to kind of put in this for the next considerations, right? Just to see some of those changes that he brought up earlier. That'd be great to, to hear those. And, you know, from, from this, from what I hear, would love to continue to see something that does not have a student fee increase. Especially when we still find ourselves coming out and trying to get to some type of even ground. So I just, as a a person part of this committee to make sure that we take care of our students, but appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, trustee Mearon. And we're really going to need, need detail on the enrollment. We got 3% down and that's, that's driving the 4 million. But what if it's 10% down? You know, we, we really got to look at those scenarios, you know, because I mean, I know the ask was for 4 million and with all straight faces, but we got to be real about this. Thank you. Okay, anything else on the 2023 budget?
I just have a quick question. This might have been mentioned at previous meetings, so I forgive me for asking again, but I'm just curious, given that the biggest part of our budget is staffing and such, I'm just wondering what kind of, if there is any incentives for people who are thinking about retiring in the form of a buyout or anything like that?
We, we've done the, the math, trustee Lindsay. And the challenge is that we, the college have to foot that bill. And when we look at who would potentially be eligible, we, we worried about being consumed by that dollar amount. And it really overwhelming us. We did it last year. And again, only I think a very small number, five or six individuals came forward. Again, for trustees, if you are a state employee in Massachusetts and you give a year's notice, you are already by definition, pending what type of unit you're in, you will already get a retirement incentive if you give the year's notice. Essentially what these, these types of things that we're talking about do is they waive the year requirement and add a sweetener on top of that. So that's why these things get very expensive very quickly. And again, there's, there's, there's a lot of accrual with some of these. I mean, again, I don't want to, I don't want to belabor it, but they're depending on seniority age, things like that, that one individual again may have, you know, a $35,000 incentive that we have to pay out. So again, these, these again can get very costly very quickly.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on 2023 budget? Okay, thanks for that update. We look forward to our next meeting to see the second round. There's no old business, any new business? Okay, hearing none. The date of our next meeting is April 11th and to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I moved.
Second?
Second.
Great, thank you very much. And then you take the role to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, Mary Kate Mearon?
Yes.
Um, Max Starks?
Yes.
Samalid Hogan?
Yes.
Maurice Lindsay?
Yes.
Norm Roldan?
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Nade. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you.